Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the January 1st meeting of the Paulding County Planning Commission. At this time, if you would, if you have an audible device, please turn it off or to silence so it doesn't interrupt the proceedings of the meeting. We are going to dispense with how to participate in a public meeting, but if you have any questions in that regard, underneath the big picture of the courthouse in downtown Dallas, there's a procedure document you can take for some light reading. The Paulding County Planning Commission is a recommending body. We will be hearing applications brought before it. Typically on behalf of Paulding County Board of Commissioners, sometimes also in the benefit of the city of Hiram. However, all the items on today's agenda are for Paulding County Board of Commissioners. They will be forwarded after a recommendation is made to the Board of Commissioners meeting for tonight at six o'clock here in the same room. So if you're the applicant, you need to be present for it to be considered, both here and at the Board of Commissioners meeting, and if you have an interest in the application, you should also be present as well. We will offer an opportunity for the applicant to come forward and present their application to the Planning Commission. You have fifteen minutes to present total time. Anytime not used can be reserved for rebuttal or for use by someone else wishing to speak on behalf of that application. Fifteen minutes is also allotted for any individual that wishes to speak against the application being presented, but that is total time, so if you have anybody lined up behind you wanting to speak in dissent or may have questions, comments, and concerns, please be respectful of their time as well and allow them the microphone. You'll come forward, you will sign in, you will state your name, and you will address your comments to the chair, the chair being me. At this time, I will, I think we have one adjustment to the agenda. Mr. Robinson, do you want to announce that?
Yes, sir, that is correct. And good afternoon, everyone. Application 2022-10Z, application by Trayton Moore, Ingram, Johnson, Steele, Kevin Moore, to rezone twenty-six plus acres on Rosedale Drive has been forwarded to the July twenty-sixth meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Robinson. And at this time, I will entertain a motion with regards to the minutes from the previous session of this body. Does anybody have any questions or recommended edits, comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. I have a motion to approve from Mr. Henson. I have a second from Ms. Seaver. All in favor? Motion passes four, zero, and one. And Mr. Robinson, if you would please introduce the first application.
Okay. Application 2022-15Z, application by Jonathan Jones, requesting to rezonate twenty-four point zero six six acres from R2 Suburban Residential to R3 Sewered Suburban Residential for development of a thirty-two lot residential subdivision. Property is located in land lots twelve oh nine and twelve forty, District Three, Section Three. It's on the north side of Old Cartersville Road across from Saddle Brook Drive. Address at that location is nineteen thirty-three Old Cartersville Road. It's in Commission Post Four. Staff has recommended approval with six stipulations. An applicant is present.
The applicant, please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair. Also, as a reminder to members of the Planning Commission, Board of Commissioners, if you wish to speak for the benefit of those that are watching being streamed, the meeting being streamed, please turn your mic on so that they can hear you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am here representing-
Just one moment.
Ms. Chairman, Board, I just wanted, I forgot one thing, that we've had no calls or anything but opposed or opposition on this.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry. Please continue.
No problem. I am here representing Mr. Ken Jones for the proposed rezoning. The property is currently R2. Sewer's on the property. It's a City of Dallas sewer facility. To get you oriented, this property is on Old Cartersville Road across from the Saddle Brook subdivision that Mr. Simpson did many moons ago, and it backs up almost directly against the City of Dallas wastewater treatment plant. The city has provided us a capacity letter that says that they've got capacity to support the sewer for this project. So the application is basically to take what is zoned R2 and zone it to R3 so that we may tie into a public sewer system. It's twenty-four acres. It's thirty-two lots, which is roughly one point three three units per acre. It adheres to the buffer requirements of the seventy-five foot along the front, fifty-foot around the perimeter. That's about the gist of it. My client has reviewed the zoning stipulations, and he is in agreement with those. It does meet the comprehensive plan as well as the future land use map, and staff has recommended approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have about this development at this time.
You answered my questions that I typically go with the stipulations, so thank you very much. Is there any additional work that you are prepared to do or you know of as far as requirements for entry into the subdivision? I know the area pretty well, and you do have a pretty severe curve going back to the east.
Yeah, so we placed the entrance at the locations because it does meet the site distance requirement. Unfortunately, at that location, the elevation difference from Old Cartersville Road to the actual entry point is about fifteen or sixteen, maybe even eighteen feet. So it will require quite a bit of excavation to get in at that location, but that's a location that would be sufficient enough to get us the site distance required by the Paulding County Development Regulations.
Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
So the developer would be willing to do the necessary left-turn lanes in Old Cartersville where they'll have not only a way to get in, a place to get into the subdivision, if they're going to be making a left-hand turn, and also the folks in the subdivision across the road are going to need someplace to hide to, you know, to get out into the road until they can actually get into the lane.
I wouldn't imagine that a left-turn lane would be warranted for thirty-two units. So my client is not amenable to putting a left-turn lane unless Paulding County DOT finds it as a requirement. I wouldn't imagine that it would be for thirty-two units, so.
But he would, the developer would be willing if they did stipulate it?
Well, I mean, if it's required by the zoning stipulations, yeah, he'd have to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Construction materials of the houses, what type of construction material?
It'll be either hardy plank or a rock brick stucco combination thereof. Basically, everything that's required by the building code as it relates to now. There wouldn't be any vinyl siding or anything like that. If any vinyls used, I would suspect it'd only be a soffit, which is pretty typical for all the homes being constructed in Paulding at this time. You know, it'd have a standard minimum two-car garage, and it would meet the minimum heated square footage required under the R3 zoning.
Price points on this?
I'm sorry?
Price points on the houses?
Well, a builder hasn't been chosen yet for this, but because of the loss of lots due to the zoning changes and the development cost, I'd imagine that these houses will be well into the three hundreds.
Well, that was my question, was who is the builder going to be, but since that hasn't been chosen yet-
Hasn't been chosen yet.
What is the school districts that this is going to be pouring into?
This is North Paulding High School, currently as it is zoned, districted.
I'll get to you momentarily. Is there any questions from the Planning Commission?
And it's not being developed for rentals, right?
It's a zoning stipulation that prohibits that.
Just making sure.
Ms. Brown, right?
I just need to confirm if it's North Paulding. I believe it's East Paulding.
Yeah, it's Paulding across the street. Saddle Brook it is.
Saddle Brook it is. When I clicked on it, it says that it's North Paulding, but I clicked on the zoning through the GIS, and it said it was North Paulding, so that could be inaccurate information.
That is something that you can check between the meetings today and this evening? Do you have any other questions on behalf of the Board of Education? Board of Commissioners, any questions? I would go to staff just momentarily for Director Jones. With regards to the entry point and the site distance verifications, the distances that you would need for that site distance back to the east, can you address that?
I don't know if you're going to put me on the spot with the exact distances, but again, what we do, obviously, during the plan review process, we ensure that the site distance, looking to your left and right out of the subdivision, your stopping site distance, your left-turn site distance would meet the requirements for a forty-five mile per hour roadway which Old Cartersville is posted as. Old Cartersville is a collector roadway. In the development regulations itself, there's language regarding left-turn lanes. That left-turn lanes are required at all new subdivisions, roadways, and also on collectors and arterials. There is a process to waive or amend any of these regulations in here, but you do have to follow, go through that process if you would like to-
But that is required by development regulation.
That is correct.
Has nothing to do with the zoning stipulations.
That is correct.
Thank you very much. Any questions to the director? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone here that may wish to speak in opposition or have questions, comments, or concerns regarding this application? Do you have anything further that you would like to add, Mr. Jones?
The square footage on these homes, are they all going to be the same or are they going to vary?
A builder's not been chosen yet, Mr. Henson. I mean, the likelihood is it'll be like most of the subdivisions where they'll range anywhere from six hundred to twelve hundred square feet, depending on if it's a ranch or a two-story, but not having a selected builder, it's almost impossible to define exactly what product will be built. I know these lots are quite a bit larger than all the other lots that are being built in this area, and so by such, it'll most likely require a larger home or it'll look, quite honestly, silly when you've got a big lot, a little house sitting on a big lot. But he doesn't have a builder yet because he doesn't know what his development costs are going to be, and he don't even know how to price the lots yet, so it's very difficult for us to define that.
With the square footage, will this support two students in the school system? I'm sorry. With the square footage that's being talked about, would this support two students or so in the school system?
Per house?
Per house.
Our typical yield's point six for every home, so thirty-two houses will probably yield as much as twenty kids, twenty students.
Just a point of clarification, you said they may vary between six hundred and twelve hundred feet.
Yeah, so like a ranch may be two thousand square foot, but a two-story might be twenty-eight hundred or three thousand square foot. There'll be a variation of square footages. It may range anywhere from six hundred square foot up to twelve hundred square foot. There may be houses in here that are thirty-six hundred, and there may be some that are two thousand. It just, it depends on if it's a ranch or a two-story, and that's pretty common about most of the homes in this particular area of the county.
Mr. Stover, did you have your hand up?
I just wanted him to clarify because it was kind of confusing, and I know that's why you just asked that same question. I just wanted him to clarify what he meant, the six hundred or twelve hundred, because I think-
Yeah. I mean, there's a minimum, there's a minimum heated square footage for the zoning category, and without a doubt, the development will be at or above that. But, you know, Mr. Henson asked if it would range, and there will be a range, I'm certain of it. I mean, it won't be the same house being built, but if there's thirty-two homes, typically there'll be a four or five product line that'll be chosen for it. So that means there'll be four or five footprints that will actually be used to build throughout the subdivision. That's pretty customary. It's usually one per twenty-eight is typically how they, or one per seven is how they determine it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just for the record, the minimal house size in the R3 district is eighteen hundred square feet heated.
Thank you.
So what you're saying, the final product of the subdivision may not even look what, look like what this plat is?
Oh, no, the subdivision will look like that, absolutely.
It is going to look like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm talking, when I say product, I'm talking about homes. Yeah, no, I mean, there's not a whole lot of creativity you can do on a piece of property that small.
Any other questions to the applicant? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Jones. At this time, I will take a motion on application twenty-two-two dash fifteen Z. Please keep in mind the six listed stipulations recommended by staff.
I recommend approval with the six stipulations.
I have a recommendation for approval by Ms. Seaver with the six listed stipulations. Is there a second? I have a second from Mr. Leggett. All in favor? All opposed? You were in favor? Okay. Motion passes four, zero, and one. Again, this will be forwarded to tonight's meeting at Board of Commissioners at 6:00 PM. An applicant must be present for it to be considered. Mr. Robinson?
Chairman, if it would be okay, the next two applications by Mr. Coleman are run concurrently together, and if it would be okay, I'd just go ahead and, I'll go ahead and just read both.
Yes, sir.
And they, of course, would be voted on separate. The next two applications, first twenty-two-two eighteen Z, application by Timothy K. Coleman, requesting to rezonate three point zero zero five acres from B1 general business to B2 highway business while concurrently seeking a special use permit to construct a self-storage facility. Property is located in land lots two sixty-seven, two sixty-eight, District Nineteen, Section Three, east side of Highway one oh one north, south side of Runell Road. Address is sixty-one forty-eight Highway one oh one north. It's in Commission Post Two. Staff has recommended approval for the rezoning with five printed stipulations. Just one noted that stipulation number five would limit this as the only B2 use, would allow B1 uses. The concurrent application, twenty-two-two oh three SUP, application by Timothy K. Coleman, requesting a special use permit to construct a self-storage facility to include truck, trailer, boat, and RV storage. Property is located in land lots two sixty-seven, two sixty-eight, District Nineteen, Section Three, east side of Highway one oh one north and south side of Runell Road, again, the address is sixty-one forty-eight Highway one oh one north, Commission Post Two. Staff has recommended approval with six printed stipulations. An applicant is present.
The applicant would please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Hello, my name is Timothy Coleman. I am here for the rezoning of property sixty-one forty-eight Highway one oh one north to be used for a self-storage facility. The property is surrounded by other B2 properties. Also, American Tower is also adjoined to that property. Across the highway, there are residential properties, which the lighting and all I have been looking at will be contained within the property. I don't see any problem with any of the neighbors having, since the traffic count will be fairly low for self-storage. Won't have any children to affect the school systems. And the way that we have looked at it so far is that there will be right turns only into the property. I am agreeing to setback for all of the current DOT plans they have for a roundabout in that area, and that will ensure gaining access to that property will be right turns only. If you miss one way to get in, you can go around the block and come in the other direction. It's, should be easy in and out for all the people that's concerned with the storage and also for the abilities to get in the camper boat parking. Is there anything else you'd like to know?
Oh, yes, sir. We'll cover that in just a second. I want to make sure that you have had an opportunity to read and agree with the five recommended stipulations on the rezoning application.
I have read them, and I do agree with the rezoning as far as the five are concerned. And on the supplement, whenever we get to that, I do have one concern.
Very well. Well, let's go ahead and address that, then, since we're considering both of these together.
Okay.
We will make two separate motions with regard to the approval, both for the application for rezoning and then with the application for the special use permit. So you have six listed stipulations for the SUP.
That's correct.
And you have a concern with one of them.
Yes, sir. Number one, as far as it contains to the no poles, no light poles. I have talked with Chris about this, and he agrees with me that we would be able to contain the light within the property if we used a reflector or a concealment-type light where it doesn't leave the property. If Chris would like to add anything to that.
Ms. Robinson?
That was one thing Mr. Coleman had brought up to staff after he received the stipulations, was concern about some of the security and safety, especially in the parking areas. And we're amenable to agreeing that he could just meet the regular standards for the highway overlay or the corridor overlay, which would require boxed or shielded lighting in those areas.
And one other thing there, as far as the gate operation hours, they will be controlled gating. You'll have to put in your passcode to open the gates at any times if you'd like. I can, I'm sure I can have the software amended so it will not work after ten o'clock or before six. That will all be software-controlled.
If this is adopted, that would be a requirement to make sure that that does not happen, and I know that the intent is to make sure that your residential neighbors are not going to be bothered by people's headlights shining into their houses during their time. So with the one amendment, potential amendment to stipulation number one on the SUP, when we get to that point for the Planning Commission, you would please need to state if you do recommend approval or motion to approve whether or not you're agreeing to amend stipulation one to include the standards for pole lights according to the corridor overlay district. Is that correct? Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
The fence that you're going to build, what type of material is that going to be?
I have thought about several different things, but I probably think as far as the security aspect of the property, to have a chain-linked fence with possibly some barbed wire on top of it, that is all according to whatever they will allow on the building district. And also, it will be along the one oh one side of the project. That will be a black vinyl coating on that fence to give it a more, to give it a better appearance.
How tall?
Six foot is the fence, and of course, if there were any barbed wire on top of that, of course, that would go in additional height. And there will probably, I don't, I don't know if you, I'm sure you know about the area, the, it's not as safety-conscious as I am. I would like to probably do something as far as if there was any fence breakage, it would also set off an audible alarm system for that. I'm thinking mainly for the safety of everybody's concern as far as their properties.
Are you going to put just barbed wire? Are you going to put razor wire on top of it?
I think razor wire would be overkill. I mean, the aesthetics of that is just-
Are you going to do a barbed wire or not, or just six foot?
I would probably do a barbed wire if it's allowed. I'll have to look at the corridor overlay and make sure that is approved, and of course, it'll be a pin. I'll depend on the approval of the, you know, they'll have to approve everything that I do anyway, so, you know. I'm willing to flex whatever it takes, you know, as far as the safety of everything concerned, traffic or even as far as the safety of the valuables that people may store there.
Mr. Coleman, you know that as a recommending body, that we're just determining whether or not the use is acceptable for this location. You will be required to submit to Paulding County Board of Commissioners through Community Development for permitting for such. So you'll go through plan review, and at that point, they will detail to you then what the requirements are aesthetically in that area, as well as ingress, egress, and all the rest of that, except where it intersects with state route. I'm sure we'll have comments, but you have to defer to the state on that.
Right, absolutely, absolutely. I just wanted to make it clear that I was going to adhere to any building codes they may have for that.
Are there any other questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
Yes. Hi, Mr. Coleman. So you're going to be keeping the boat and the RV parking just tucked back in the back, is that correct?
It would, the way it has laid out there, it'll be around the outside perimeter. And I do not know at this time if that is the best way to lay it out. We will have further reviews on that, and I will be getting with a couple of different self-storage manufacturings that has been in the business for several years to get the best layout possible that I can get the most return on it.
Okay, and what are the storage units? Are any of them going to be conditioned space? Is it all going to be unconditioned?
It will all be unconditioned to start with. I will do conditioned space as needed if I see a need for it, and I will certainly put some in.
And what, is this going to be made out of metal? Is it metal buildings?
The majority of it is, yes, it is metal. But I've been talking to Mr. Robinson here, I guess you prefer last names, but Mr. Robinson about the aesthetics of the building, and he has suggested several different types of buildings that would be suitable and that would be aesthetically pleasing. So we will, we will make it look nice. It'll probably be one of the nicest things on the corner.
And Chris, may I ask you a question, Mr. Robinson? On something like this, it's in an overlay corridor, so if it's anything that's facing the road or anything that can be seen by the road, it has to have a mixture of some brick, stone, or stucco, but then the other buildings that are not seen by the road do not, is that, that's not a requirement? Is that correct?
That's pretty much right on. Anything that would be visible from the actual corridor is the Highway one oh one side. We would work with them as we have some of the other self-storage facilities on requiring a different type than this all metal. Some have put stone facades, some have put brick, and working with two or three of them right now.
Okay, thank you.
Are you going to own and operate this yourself or lease it out?
It will be owner-operated, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're showing two accesses, one entrance to one oh one and looks like an entrance and exit on Runell Road. Are those going to be used equally, or one oh one, your primary access, in Runell Road, a one-way now?
Yes, sir, but once the roundabout has been finished, that will be a private drive shared by myself and the adjacent property owner.
Thank you.
And so that, it doesn't matter as far as the one oh one drive. It will be changed around from what this is. But there will be, I'm working with the county DOT about what they're going to do as far as changing that entrance. And then, of course, on the private drive, it will be all. So either way you come in, everything will be a right turn, coming in, go around the roundabout and come in that way. There's just several ways to get in there, but that way, I'll disturb as little traffic as we can as far as trying to put in a left-turn lane that's not necessary, and it's really not cost-effective to do so.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Board of Education? Board of Commissioners, any questions?
I've got a couple of questions, comments, whatever. One of them is in the letter that you sent. One thing is a name. You've got North Paulding Development LLC?
As you know, sir, I did read that, but my engineer actually composed that letter, so let me look back over that. That was a misprint. That is not correct.
Yeah, I was hoping so, because I don't- Yeah, I was hoping so, because I own, because I own North Paulding Development, so I knew I didn't.
No, that, that is not, that is not, that is not correct.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't doing this.
Yeah, are you not doing this?
So, and the next thing is, it has included truck, trailer, boat. Of course, in this zoning, you cannot park big trucks in this zoning anyway, I just want to make sure you, with this letter I'm reading, was aware that truck, that's, big trucks can't park in B1.
Uh, the, and there again, uh, this letter, letter was not composed by myself. I did review it, but evidently not well enough. Uh, I also found a couple of misspellings of Grinnell Road, it's not Grinnell, that's now Renell, so, so I do need to talk to him about some of that, but, uh, the large truck parking is not going to be there. There's not going to be any large truck parking at all, it's just going to be RV and camper, um, and you will have boats, of course, but, but that's the only parking that will be there, it'll have no heavy trucks. So that's.
Any other questions?
He mu, he mu, he must have done some form letters for you, Brian.
Um, I don't know, I don't have one of these, I don't know.
He just didn't change that form letter, yeah.
Any other questions on the part of Board of Commissioners? Mr. Dunn?
Chris, just a point of clarification. Under the changes that were recently made under the special use, this kit, the vertical construction is a requirement now. We, this can't be reverted back to under the B2 zoning, open parking, is that correct?
That is correct, and that was something I, I thought I would bring up just last month as we made those updates to the Unified Development Ordinance. Uh, one of the changes was that you couldn't just go in and have a boat-camper parking facility primarily its own on a B2 site. Uh, it has and requires now that it has a mini-storage facility, and that, the, the actual parking is an auxiliary use to that facility, and this would meet that, that new standard.
Thank you.
One other question with regards to, um, the type of, is it asphalt is required?
The actual corridor overlay would allow asphalt, and I know that they're already showing some detention area and such on there, so.
Okay.
We would anticipate that, and.
Not gravel, or it has to be asphalt, okay.
Any other questions from the planning commission to the applicant? Thank you, sir, you may take your seat.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? And that would include the SUP application as well, both for or against. Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion on application 2022-18-Z.
I'm making motion to approve 22-18-Z and also 22-03-SUP.
I'm, I'm gonna.
You're going to do them separate?
I'm gonna do them separate, yeah, just make sure that we get it right.
With the addition of a number seven to allow limited box-type lighting around the side.
That's on the SUP.
That's on the SUP.
Yeah, the SUP has six stipulations, the application is five. So you're making recommendation for approval with the five stipulations?
That's right.
For the actual application to rezone. That was by Mr. Leggett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Henson, all in favor? Motion passes four, zero, and one. And, uh, let me go ahead and get that recorded. And on the application for the special use permit, which is application 2022-03-SUP, you may continue.
I make that motion.
Have a motion.
With the addition of number seven to allow limited box-type lighting around the side of the property.
Okay, I have a motion for Mr. Leggett to approve with the six listed stipulations, adding a seventh, but this would be more of an amendment to the first stipulation.
Yes, I think that, that the best way to do it, we do amend stipulation one to eliminate the pole requirement and indicate that lighting shall be subject to the corridor overlay requirements.
So there's not a need for?
There's not a need for a seventh.
Is the wall lighting, is there going to be an option, or is just going to be the box-type lighting?
Wall lighting would be satisfactory and, and allowed. Yeah, so, so just to restate Mr. Leggett's motion, as, as I'm understanding it, it's going to be a motion to approve with six stipulations, with the first stipulation being amended to remove the prohibition against pole lights and to require that lighting comply with the requirements of the corridor overlay district.
That's my motion.
All right. I have a motion to approve by Mr. Leggett with the six listed stipulations, with the number one, uh, stipulation amended as stated by the planning commission's attorney, and I will accept a second if there is one. I have a second from Ms. Fitzgerald, all in favor. Motion passes four, zero, and one. And again, Mr. Coleman, this will be forwarded to tonight's meeting at 6:00 for the Board of Commissioners, you are required to be here for it to be considered. Ms. Robinson?
Okay, next application, 2022-19Z, application by Arpet Realty LLC, requesting to rezone 6.67 acres from R2 Suburban Residential to B1 General Business for the purposes of expanding a gas slash convenience service station. Property is located in Land Lot 1034, District 19, Section 3, it's north of the, north, uh, side of the intersection of Georgia Highway 120 and 101, in Commission Post 2. Uh, staff has recommended approval with four stipulations, and we've had no opposition. The applicant is present, and just for the record, this is also, will rezon, rezone the acre that's the current store, which used to be Swalford's location, if you're familiar with the Union area, and so, uh, this brings everything into compliance, plus adds another five acres to it.
Please, sir.
Yes, I'm Terry Dobbins, representing Arpet Realty. Uh, we just want to try to improve on our traffic situation we got there. We're going to add some more gas pumps to the back of the store, try to line up a, a entrance way, line it up with Mulberry Rock, uh, and, and just try to improve on everything that we got there. Doing a great business, just a little tough sometimes getting in and out, trying to, trying to improve on that. It goes around an acre there, but we closed on that last week, we bought that house, so, got to deal with him to rent it to him to the end of the year, but we did buy that acre. We'll be back wanting to do that later. It's about all, you know, I, any questions, be glad, they're just trying to improve on what we have there, got a great business and trying to make it better.
Mr. Dobbins, there are four listed stipulations recommended by staff, have you had an opportunity to review those?
Yes, we do.
Are you in agreement with them?
Yes.
You also understand that the development, regardless, if we forward a recommendation for approval, Board of Commissioners approves it, you'll still be required to submit for plan review to go through that whole process as far as determining the actual building permits and such?
Yes.
There any questions to the applicant from the planning commission? I'll go ahead and ask, it's School Board, any questions? Board of Commissioners?
Just out of curiosity, where's your septic tank lines at on this drop?
What's what now?
Where's your septic tank lines at on this?
The septic tank lines now is in that, uh, fenced-in area there at the end where the plumbing business is, we're going to relocate those on some of this five acres, uh, or relocate part of them, whatever the health department requires us to do.
Any other questions?
I'd like to ask Mr. Dobbins, I heard from one of the nearby residents that there's possibility that the state is going to do a roundabout at 101 and 120, is that true?
Um, the state is going to permit one, and actually, the county has been working on a roundabout there. We've done the preliminary engineering and the final stages of right-of-way with one property owner, so, um, everything goes according to plan, and we should be letting that for construction sometime within the next couple of months.
Hang on a second, that's all going to improve the traffic situation, right?
That is the goal, absolutely. Um, again, the intersection itself doesn't warrant a traffic signal, a roundabout, uh, we'll work there, state's reviewed it, uh, both the district and downtown, um, they're acceptable with it, I think it'll be a great project. Obviously, there's language in the stipulations for this particular development to accommodate those plans. Thank you.
Any other questions from the planning commission to the applicant or staff? Thank you, Mr. Dobbins, you may take your seat. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns regarding this application? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for application 2022-19-Z. I have a motion to approve from Mr. Henson with the four listed stipulation. I have a second from Ms. Seaver, all in favor. Motion passes four, zero, and one. Again, it will be forwarded to tonight's meeting for the Board of Commissioners at 6:00, applicant must be present for it to be considered. I think I've got that down now, I just keep saying. Mr. Robinson?
Okay, and the last application of the day is 2022-20Z, application by Chris Barfield, requesting to rezone 3.06 acres from A1 Agricultural to R2 Suburban Residential to bring into compliance and, uh, build a single-family home. Property is located in Land Lot 685 and 756, District 18, Section 3, it's on the west side of Lee Road, north of Brazile Mountain Road, it's in Commission Post 4, and staff has recommended approval with one stipulation, and just, uh, to go ahead and clear it up, uh, the zoning compliance, this piece was a late leftover from a piece of property across the road that was rezoned agricultural on 94, 95, and this little piece was just caught up in it, and, uh, the Barfields have purchased that piece, and this is really housekeeping to clean it up, and we appreciate it.
All right. Is the application, applicant present? You could please come around, sign in, state your name, and tell us what your plans are.
Come up here and do this part.
It's okay, I like ad-libbing.
Uh, the, the purpose is to build a house. Uh, we have 21 acres, and, uh, what I want, the next step will be after, if it's approved, will be to survey out a small section for myself and my wife to build a house, right? So later on, when we do kill over, that section will be already handled for our two boys, not have to worry about that section, I'll try to pull something out of 21 acres, so.
And, go ahead and ask you, have you seen the stipulation recommended by the county?
I did, yes, sir.
And you're agreeable to it?
Yes.
There any questions to the applicant from the planning commission? School Board? Board of Commissioners? Thank you very much, sir.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone here that may have questions, comments, or concerns, or wishes to speak in opposition to this application? At, heard some murmuring, but I didn't see anybody stand up, so, this time, I'll entertain a motion with regard to application 2022-20-Z.
I make a motion to approve with the one stipulation.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Leggett with the one listed stipulation. I have a second from Ms. Fitzgerald, all in favor. Motion passes four, zero, and one. Mr. Robinson, is there anything further that I need to add before we go to adjourn?
We are good going, thank you everyone for being here.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, come on now. A motion to adjourn from Mr. Henson, do I have a second? I have a second from Ms. Fitzgerald, all in favor. Motion passes four, zero, and one. Thank you very much, y'all have a wonderful month.